Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular meeting of your Danville City Commission for May the 8th, 2017. As I look down at the bench both ways, I do believe we have a full quorum tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Searis. I would ask that our meeting be opened up tonight with a prayer from Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's bow. Most gracious and almighty one, we thank you again for such a lovely day, and we thank you for this opportunity to assemble in a peaceful place. And our wish tonight is that you will grant us peace and prosperity, and that the work that we do tonight will be pleasing in thy sight. These are all blessings I ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. And tonight, we have with us Ms. Madison Gussay. Ms. Madison, would you come join us? She's going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Ms. Madison, come over here and tell us all about you.
My name is Madison Gussay, and I'm 10 years old, and I go to Danville Christian Academy.
You're a fifth grader?
I'm in fifth grade.
You just ran the principal off.
What?
Yeah, we just ran the principal off.
What's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject is math.
Hmm, supposed to say social studies.
Do you think you can balance our budget for it? Well, on behalf of the city of Danville for doing such a wonderful job, let me present to you a pen that is emblematic of our key to the city. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
You have in front of you tonight's agenda. Is there any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, I trust it meets with your approval.
We do have one addition requested.
Yes, sir.
That could probably go under utility service. Is that what you would recommend, Earl? And that is, it would be Resolution Number Five, and it would pertain to the acceptance of a grant you'll be excited about from the EDA.
Can we make that the last? Does that work for you all?
Yes.
Okay. We're just making it number 19. Perfect. All right, we're at that section of the meeting where we have here the public, and we would ask you to confine your comments at this point to items on tonight's agenda. There'll be an opportunity later on for another here-of-the-public session for any item that's not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that wants to address anything about tonight? Seeing none, move right on to the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings, and that being April 24th and April the 27th. At your convenience, do I hear a motion?
I move for approval of the minutes of April 24th and April 27th, 2017, as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Cardle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any further comments? Any additions, corrections? Seeing none, the chair will call the question. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item two is a proclamation about Police Officer Memorial Week. Do we have anybody? Chief?
Sir?
You want to come represent your gang here?
The gang.
Your gang? Didn't know you were going to have to wake up tonight, did you?
I didn't know that.
This is a proclamation for National Police Officer Appreciation Week, and whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2017, as National Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the city of Danville play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Danville and its citizens, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the law enforcement agency of the city of Danville unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the city commissioners of the city of Danville, on this eighth day of May 2017, do hereby call upon all citizens of Danville and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through 21st, 2017, as Police Officer Appreciation Week with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Danville to observe Thursday, May the 18th, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Danville, in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community and have become disabled or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes in a ceremony at Bellevue Cemetery May the 18th at 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. Chief, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
See you the 18th.
18th, 2:00.
2:00. Any words? You're welcome.
I just want to say thank you. We will have our observance, Mr. Nelson and Mr. Crum, that died in the line of duty as police officers for the city of Danville. That will be the 18th, Thursday of this month, at 2:00 at Bellevue. Thank you.
Yes.
Would you come join me for this proclamation?
What about the other people?
Well, have them all come up.
We have some well-preserved people here.
I'm not going to touch that one at all. Whereas preservation of Kentucky's historic buildings and sites is a proven economic development tool that creates jobs, attracts investment, revitalizes downtowns and neighborhoods, stimulates heritage tourism, fosters new business development, assists affordable housing, increases property values, and improves the economic climate of communities; and whereas preservation has been established as public policy under the National Historic Preservation Act, which provided the framework for the Kentucky Legislature to create the State Historic Preservation Office in late 1996, and amendments to the Act in 1980 enabled successful partnerships between federal, state, and local governments. Whereas the Kentucky Heritage Council and the State Historic Preservation Office is responsible for the identification, protection, and preservation of archaeological sites and historic and cultural resources throughout the Commonwealth, in partnership with elected officials, community leaders, advocates, nonprofit organizations, and interested citizens. And whereas the city of Danville and heart of Danville have been a certified local government for many years in partnership with the Kentucky Heritage Council and the National Park Service, and has established historic preservation as a public policy, and worked to meet federal, state, and local historic preservation objectives, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and because of the wealth of Kentucky's historic buildings, its sites, structures, and places, it is important that citizens of the Commonwealth recognize and value this heritage. Now therefore, I, Mayor G. Michael Paris, and the Board of Commissioners of the city of Danville do hereby proclaim May 2017 as Historic Preservation Month.
Thank you very much.
And one misquote to bond, and that is that the Preservation Office in the state of Kentucky was started in 1966, not 96.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to accept. I think we can do it together, can't we? Sure.
I move to accept the proclamations for Police Officer Appreciation and Historic Preservation Month.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
I just wanted to say nobody works harder in this county for preservation than Ms. Barbara Hewlett.
And what most people don't know about Ms. Barbara Hewlett is that she is not only a force in this community, she's a force in the state, and she is a force well-known at the federal level of historic preservation. And you're a great resource, and we're glad to claim you as our own.
Yes, we are.
Item four is the Great American Brass Band banner request. Ms. Kincaid. We didn't call on you.
I'm a bodyguard.
That's right. We request the banner for the Great American Brass Band Festival.
For the what?
The banner.
For the what's it called? Great American what? June the 3rd.
If you have not noticed, we have some famous amongst us in this poster here. I will let you look. If you buy a poster, you get a little key with it to see who's in there, and we have two famous people in this room.
Like Where's Waldo?
It is a Where's Waldo, or Where's the Mayor, or the Chief of Police. Oh, I told you. Ben, thank you for doing such a wonderful job on this. You and Bobby really pulled it off. It's beautiful. So, do you need me to know what we do?
I'll move to accept this banner request.
Thank you, Commissioner Searis and Commissioner Cardle. I assume the banner meets all specs. It does. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's in spite of Tom.
Tom, you don't need to guard her body anymore. Just want to clarify that. Item five is a Human Rights Committee appointment that you have in front of you, wherein I would like to recommend that Arlen Finkie be reappointed to that commission. His term will expire in May 30th, 2020.
I'll move that Mr. Finkie be reappointed to the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
I may make a comment on that.
Certainly.
It's nice to have a representative of our deaf community on some of these committees.
And he's active in the community. He's very interested.
Yep.
Item six, you have before you is a recommendation that Gail Lewis, Ruth Ryan, and Emma Shannon be reappointed to the Cemetery Committee. Their terms will expire in 2020. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
I think you beat him to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. He's giving you one. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Item seven, you have before you my recommendation on a new appointment to the cemetery, and that'd be Julie Rhodes. As you know, Julie was very instrumental in the acquisition and preservation of the Willis Russell House there on East Walnut, and she's very much into history and horticulture, that type of thing. I think she'll be a valuable asset.
I'll move to appoint Ms. Julie Rhodes to the Cemetery Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
And thank you, Commissioner Searis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign, motion carries. And finally, you have before you a, I shouldn't say finally, I should say, you have before you the recommendation of Phil Showalter to be reappointed to the County Board of Assessments, and that's a three-year term.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Cardle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Any discussion?
Anybody that would do that has my sincerest gratitude.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, Code Enforcement, Ms. Lester.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'd like to say thank you today. At lunch, I was in an accident, and I'm very thankful for my police chief and the police department and the fire department and EMS and everyone that was there to assist. And I'm always proud to be a part of the city of Danville team, but today I was involved in the middle of it. So thankfully, I'm okay. I'm a little shaken up. Carter didn't fare so well, but I was hit sitting still. But anyway, I just want to say thank you to everyone who stopped and did their part today. I really do appreciate it.
Glad you're okay.
Yes, me too. But if I sound a little shaky, like I said, I'm still shaken up.
You're doing good.
We had, for the month of April, we had nuisance complaints. We had four abandoned vehicles, eight garbage and trash. Under inspections, we had seven noise permits, one garbage container, two dogs, under animal complaints. We issued 37 business licenses for $925. We had three lien recoveries for $1,074.68, for total, for the month of 84 inspections. We had 113 parking citations issued for the month of April, which totaled $2,185. We now have, our lien holder notification is up and running. You can sign up for that on our homepage for the city of Danville, which is www.danvilleky.org, and you'll start getting those notifications as properties are added out there for that. If anyone can't figure that out, just give me a call at City Hall, and I'll help you through that. Our design guidelines hopefully will be to us this week. Our contractor, their central server crashed, so they've had to get everything back from them, and so hopefully that'll be in this week, and we'll get those out to everyone to look at that first draft of those. And I'll entertain any questions you all might have.
Any questions?
I'll be glad to start with a comment instead of a question. Again, really appreciate getting this report as often as we do, and I want to point out like I did last time that under the business license issued, 37, we're not stagnant in this town. Last time you reported, I think it was in the '40s or something, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're doing really well.
Yeah, that's encouraging to me, and I think to the rest of the commission.
We're glad you're okay.
Thank you.
And do appreciate the report.
Wouldn't hurt us at all if you just took off the rest of the time.
Mayor, I do want to say too, just in mention of this report, I think just the consolidation of it and the other processes that are now in place, I think you're going to start seeing an increase in the lien recovery. I think it's abundantly clear, at least by the organization that's been put in place by the code staff, it's much more transparent and easily identifiable for the master commissioner, and for us, on legal side of things, to file the necessary documents that we need to be able to get paid, some of which possibly was delayed based on our system before. And not that we were required to have this system, but the point is it's much more efficient, and we are seeing results in it, certainly.
Yes.
Well done. Item 10 is a recommendation from the Architectural Heritage Board. Tom, with your permission, I'd like to deviate just a little bit and say to everyone that I have had two very productive conversations with legal counsel for the Hamblins, who has assured me that they have developed a timeline, and that timeline will be followed. And he has assured me he is going to see to it that that timeline is going to be followed. There were electricians in the building today that had already started, and so, like my father said, it's easier to catch flies with honey than it is vinegar. And so with your acceptance, I'd like to give this an opportunity to move forward in a positive way, and let's see if we just can't get on down the road with what we all want here, and that is a, not only stabilized, but a renovated property in the middle of a block of downtown Danville. Does that suit you all?
Can you give us an idea of the timeline? Do you know, or did they allow?
I don't know. Matt Walters is going to present that timeline to the city manager.
Okay.
And he will have that and be able to follow up on that.
Okay.
And make sure they're adhering to it.
With Tom's on the agenda, did you want nothing to say? All right, just want to make sure.
You have accomplished everything that I would request. Very good.
Very good.
Simply to thank Mr. Ty and the Architectural Heritage Board for submitting the letter of concerns and issues, because we really appreciate that information.
Yes.
And Tom, I'm sure somebody wanted you to come up to the mic and say something, but you didn't quite make it up there, so.
Okay. All right.
Again, while we're pointing out efficiencies, we should note that the manner in which the Architectural Heritage Board communicated with you as a commission via letter and report is the most efficient way for committees and different boards of the city to communicate to the commission and the public as a whole, adopt findings, propose recommendations to you to take action. So that's a model of how all committees should be communicating with the city.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate it.
Well done.
Yes.
You didn't know you were that good, did you?
He certainly didn't know he was a model.
So, does Boyle Landmark Trust still want to make some comments?
I think Boyle Landmark Trust would like to still make some comments. Please take the microphone.
I'm Barbara Hewlett. I'm not chair anymore of Boyle Landmark Trust, but I'm standing in for the chair. Jacob Pankie could not be with us tonight, and he asked to, he expressed his regrets that he couldn't be here, and we had...
We'd rather have you anyway.
We had previously decided to make a statement from Boyle Landmark Trust in support and in gratitude of the work that the city and AHB had accomplished and was trying to do for the properties on Main Street that we're vitally interested in also. And so I'm here just to confirm that Boyle Landmark Trust's mission, of course, is educating and advocating for the historic preservation of Danville and Boyle County, but we have all of Boyle County, not just downtown Danville. And we're very, very dedicated to the preservation and sustainability of our downtown and of the properties. So we were going to express concern and interest in the clay building, 311 West Main, and now that that has been very nicely accommodated, I want to thank the city very, very much. We're deeply grateful for the work that has gone into this, as well as the AHB for their work that they're doing, because this is the total picture of how preservation should really work. And we work together, and we're very, very grateful for this opportunity to be able to express it publicly, and I say that on behalf of Boyle Landmark Trust, that we really want to encourage people to let us know how we can help as an organization. We have lots of information and connections, and we want to be a part of the solution, not ever part of the problem. So thank you, thank you very much to the city and AHB. I'm really grateful. And it demonstrates what we're all about, is working together in the positiveness of Danville. We love Danville and Boyle County, so thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing further. City manager, report, please, sir.
Yes, sir. This Thursday, May 11th, at 4:00 p.m., the city commission has agreed to hold a workshop in these chambers to review the study just released by Brevira regarding the findings of their review of the conditions of our fire station number one on Main Street. They will go through their findings and their initial recommendations to the city with regard to solving the problems encountered in the present condition of that fire department. So that's the first part of the agenda on this Thursday, May the 11th, at 4:00 p.m. Also, on that workshop agenda will be a discussion, again, of our other major expenditure items in the next fiscal year or needs of the cities, as was expressed in the preliminary budget that was presented some two weeks ago. I've had a number of questions, as I know you have, citizens, and I've had some questions from you, and I think this is an opportunity for us to get into some detail in a workshop just regarding those issues and any clarifications that would be necessary or desired in terms of that initial set of recommendations. So that would be part of the discussion, too, this Thursday. Additionally, I would also report that last Friday, Earl and I, our city engineer and I, had a meeting with Branstad or Carroll representatives regarding their early work in organizing their efforts to conduct a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and that has started nicely. We've sent out a survey. We have it online. We've got a lot of results back in. Their typical approach that they are going to be following in this instance, too, to identify our priorities, goals, and future vision for our master Parks and Recreation planning is to, over a span of nine or 10 months, conduct an inventory of operations and facilities, and have discussions with individuals in the community, as well as staff, to put together that report, again, within nine or 10 months, bring back to this commission. As it is a work process of staff, they have asked that staff present them with a list of individuals in the community that they could use as a, I guess, a steering committee, or an ad hoc steering committee, basically, to meet over the next few months to talk about some aspects of that study. And so I thought it would be appropriate to announce that to the city commission, and if one or more commissioners wanted to serve on that committee, please let me know. And I believe the first meeting will not begin for another month or so, and so that is also in the works. And again, it's a working committee. I think you'll meet probably every other month for several months as we begin the early phases of this. Ultimately, the findings, of course, will be well documented in meetings and discussions with our public and in these chambers as well, but we're off to a running start on that. So those two items really conclude my report.
Any comments or questions for?
The survey you mentioned, is that targeted, or can anybody get on the website? The survey you mentioned, is that targeted, or can anybody get on the website and pick that?
It is on the website, or will be. It was a, it's designed to get input broadly from our citizens in Danville, Boyle County, Danville particularly, Boyle County also, in terms of those that use the park. Our first approach was to send survey packets home with schoolchildren in all of our schools. And we had, I think, total response to eight is like 800 or so completed surveys back. It's an amazing response, and we have had some additional surveys on the, on our web-based survey, and that is still open and can still be accessed for those who have not responded. Is that correct, Earl?
How long will that survey be open?
Two more weeks.
Okay.
Yep. We have to reach a conclusion point. It's been tossed around Facebook.
Right.
Most people--
That's what I was going to say.
Have seen that. It's on the city's Facebook link. Also, there should be a link to it on the city's webpage. If not, we'll make sure that it is linked over there. It's a short, five-minute type survey. If you want to comment, maybe 10, there's an opportunity to do that. And then, you can hop over from there to the project website, sign in, and then get updates emailed to you over time. So, it can be fairly interactive, so that you can provide ongoing feedback if you want to interact in that way as the project progresses, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And we are following the protocol planned by the consultant, and so, that's going to include, you know, as the city manager said, several meetings with the public, several, a couple of meetings with you guys, a lot of input gathering from stakeholders, if you will. Some of those, they'll suggest to us and identify for us, and others, we will have to brainstorm, come up with on our own, so. And it is on the webpage. Donna, just confirm that for us.
Thank you.
I would like to express interest in being on that committee, as long as I don't have to arm wrestle Commissioner Cyrus for that.
Well, I pay money to see that.
I'm stronger than I look.
Anything else for Scott?
I'll publicly say I'd like to be on it as well, yeah.
Go again, y'all gonna have to have-- No, kidding.
We are at that point in our meeting called "Hear the Public," which is your opportunity--
Wait, wait, wait. I want to be on the committee, too.
Can't do that. That makes it-- If there's anything that anyone would like to address to us about any subject that is not on tonight's agenda, Ms. Brantley.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. My name is Jane Brantley. I would like to extend an invitation to the members of the commission and the public to the Spring Concert of Sounding Joy Women's Choir, conducted by Dr. Barbara Hall. This is our 11th season. The concert is Thursday, May 18th, at 7:30 p.m. at the Presbyterian Church. Our concert title is "Through Our Own Eyes," and we will be presenting, among other pieces, the Kentucky premiere of a choral piece that Sounding Joy Women's Choir, along with about 50 other choirs nationally, had commissioned. This piece is entitled "A Flint Holds Fire." It is to honor the water problems in Flint, Michigan, and uphold that problem and ongoing difficulties there, to bring knowledge and education to the public about that. The piece will be narrated by six members of the national award-winning Danville Forensics team that will speak above the music in the words of children and teenagers in Flint, Michigan, and their reactions to the water crisis there. So, we will also be taking donations for a nonprofit that's helping to help with the water crisis in Flint for our charity for this spring. So, I cordially invite you to come have an evening of wonderful music that will help some people that need our support, and thanks for all the great water we have here in Danville. I appreciate it. Thank you.
What time, Ms. Brantley? What time?
7:30.
7:30. Thank you.
And that was at the Presbyterian Church?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come forth, Ms. Wilma.
I did not bring any pies tonight, just up front, in case you were asking. I looked over the preliminary budget and did not see anything in there concerning our drug problem here in the community, and everybody's concerned about that. I'm also a little bit concerned about the possibility of raising taxes. If we need to raise taxes for the safety or well-being of our citizens, I'm all for that. I'm all for raising taxes if we need to improve or develop our infrastructure, certainly. I don't even question that. But there's some other things I have some questions on. In the past year, this commission has approved money for various consultants. The fire station evaluation's $27,400. Waste water system evaluation, $43,500. A consultant for Parks and Recreation, $77,000. I'm not sure that that totally went through, so I'm not sure about that number. Now, we have a wayfinding signage consultant for $27,000, and we just spent $84,000 for the EDP consultant through the RKG company. RKG recommended that EDP relieve itself from responsibility for Chamber of Commerce, for the Heart of Danville, and for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. It also recommended that economic development now be centered on industrial development, putting the industrial foundation at the head of that particular concern, and to drop emphasis on downtown development, community development, and drop emphasis on commercial development, essentially bringing us back to what we had 25 years ago. The only thing that is different at this time is that we are putting, as citizens, a great amount of money into economic development. At that time, we were not 25 years ago. So, I am questioning that we need an additional employee there for $90,000. Your proposal is to give an extra $90,000 on top of whatever has also been given to economic development in order to hire another employee. So, what I see is that economic development now has less responsibility, and yet needs more employees to carry out what they've been doing. So, I would have a problem with that. I also have a problem with the qualified preservation employee, not because I don't think that's important, but I think that might have been handled another way. The Heart of Danville has just hired two new employees. Heart of Danville did not see it important that either one of those employees had a preservationist background. And so, seeing that, I would think perhaps that is not a priority. Also, the preservationist employee is a preservationist, so it's not an objective employee. It's someone who is going to fight to preserve the buildings. Not that I have a problem with that, but I don't understand why we need that employee on the payroll when certainly Boyle Landmark Trust and AHB had demonstrated tonight that they're doing a wonderful job in helping us with our preservation here in town. So, to add an employee, and this is not a consultant, this is an employee, that means every year we need an additional $80,000 for that employee. This, again, if we are a flush community and we can have everything we want, absolutely we should have a preservationist employee. The idea is that in order to keep our status as a certified local government, we need this particular employee on the city payroll. Also, the idea is that this employee, we cannot get certain grants if we do not have this particular type of employee in place. But my question is, will we get $80,000 worth of grants a year in order to cover that salary? I can't see how we would, although I may be completely wrong about that. But I don't see a necessity for a preservationist employee, especially when we have a problem with drugs in this community that everyone is very concerned about. My question would be, do we need another law enforcement officer? I would be happy to have my taxes raised if that would help our situation. Do we need somebody, an expert on mental health or rehabilitation of something of that sort? That would be important to me. It's important that we preserve buildings, but I have known two of the young people who died with drug-related deaths this year, and I've known two of the other families that also had young people die from drug-related deaths. I doubt if there is a person in this room who has not been touched in some way in the last year with one of these deaths. So, when it comes to preserving a building or a life, I will have to say that our money needs to go toward preserving these young lives.
Thank you, Wilma. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. We will then move into commissioner comments, if there are any.
You betcha. First of all, I'd like to do a shout-out to the Public Works crew, Tom Byerly and his folks. There was a fun run Sunday at Jackson Park that was held by the Montessori folks, and a lot of those folks were giving compliments on how well the park looked and what condition the trails were in, so I appreciate that. You know, we all know Millennium Park's our premier park, but we should not shy away from the other parks in town, so thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. Also, I had mentioned, because I do serve on Safe Communities Task Force and the Ad Hoc Committee for Parks and Rec, that I give you folks updates as I come out of those meetings. So, unfortunately, I left my notes at the office, but I can go from memory a little bit. Safe Communities did talk a little, we always talk about drugs and where we're going with that, but we also talk a little bit about traffic safety, and so, I told them that we, we, the city and police department, we're looking into that and working on that. So, they're doing a lot of good work with Safe Communities Task Force in terms of trying to work with our city and county governments to make this place a little safer. And as they get their application completed, and they are one half the way through that, we will be in line to get some federal grant money to address some of these problems. That'll be a big help to the city as well. On the Ad Hoc Committee, we basically had a short meeting. The mayor and city manager are there, so they can back me up if they want to, but the monies that we and the county put forward to do some improvements at Millennium Park within budget, things are wrapping up for this go-around, so we have some new fields out there for softball and volleyball and basketball, and we're getting some restroom improvements. I don't think I missed anything there, did I, folks?
Nope.
Okay. Good deal. So, Jenny Carroll this weekend, big event here. It'll attract about 300 or 400 runners on the streets of Danville. It's a big deal. That's coming up, so that's what we're looking for. Tomorrow, before we get to Saturday, it'll be that branding unveiling, right, Jennifer?
Yeah.
All right. Tenny M. Aldette Warrenwood, is that what it's called?
What time?
10:00.
Yeah. So, Danville's being rebranded. Let's see. I might stand aside, let you all jump in on some of the other things, but I will, because before our next meeting, Happy Mother's Day to all you mothers out there.
Commissioner Terry and I were at the CASA event, when I was at, Friday night. Well-attended. Nice to see lots of young people there. That was the best part that I got out of it. Mr. Scott and I ably represented the city Saturday at the Chamber of Commerce Charity Event. It was the Chamber Shoot, which was quite a unique event, and cold and rainy, but a lot of fun. So, old dead-eye Scott over there, I'm telling you, he's tough. And then, you mentioned the work session Thursday. And that's the extent of mine.
We were going to teach the mayor the wobble, because he doesn't know how to do that, so I think we need to make sure he learns how to do the wobble.
Never heard of this dance. The wobble.
He did not dance Friday night, just for the record.
Is what the young folks are doing?
I won't make any comments. Ms. Atkins, you got anything?
Not after the wobble. I've got a pass.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah.
I can't wobble, Mr. Mayor, but no.
But I tell you, if Commissioner Terry will demonstrate, I might--
No, I don't know how to do it either.
Okay. All right.
I don't go much beyond the electric slide. There you go.
Item 13 is the payment of bills. Do you hear a motion that we approve the payment of bills as presented?
I'll move.
Go ahead.
Pay the bill, let's date it May 8th, 2017, the amount of $418,156.27.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any discussion, any additions, any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item 14 is the water plant update, and perhaps if Flint, Michigan, had had Brent Tippy in their neck of the woods, they wouldn't have had that problem. And Mr. Tippy, glad to have you. Glad you're here. See, you just came in from Churchill Downs from the weekend with your shirt and tie. It's good.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the comment on the tire from one stylishly dressed man to another, yes. Mayor Commissioners and staff and residents of Danville, it is very good to be back in front of you all tonight, especially to give you an update on the progress of the water plant project. It was roughly 1,150 days ago that I stood before this commission and asked for the approval to award the contract to the construction firm, Judy Contracting. So, it has been a long march, and we are near the end. And I think as you drive by, you can see the progress apparent on the outside, the seed and straw, or the seeding, not being the only issue. You can see the buildings being finished, the concrete drives and the delivery areas being finished, the blacktop going in, a little bit of the resumption of the use of that property for walkers and joggers, and we're excited about the fact that soon there'll be park facilities back in there and able to use it again. We do have one area that, Cecil, we still are, until we can get some fencing up, we would still like to keep that closed a little bit longer. That is one exception to the rule of progress that we're making. The contractor has had some challenges on the backside, and so, the fencing is supposed to be started in the next two weeks. We expect by the end of the month, that fencing to be finished in that area, and hopefully we can reopen Cecil at that time. The schedule that we have right now shows us being substantially complete with the project in terms of functional use by the end of May. That's what the contractor has given us. So, we have really only two outlying features right now to be completed. One of them is a couple of the chemical facilities inside the new, a couple of the chemical equipment facilities inside the new building that are being installed as we go, as we speak now. And then, we needed to have some of that done so that they could put the backup power generator in its place. And so, the generator will be the last thing set on the project, and we expect all this to be done by the schedule that they've provided to us by the end of this month. So, that should be as far as substantial completion. Of course, you've had full use of the plant, as you all have heard me say before, since August of, well, last year, November of the previous year. So, you've had it for some time now with the new facilities. We have gone through some performance testing of all the facilities during that time, and that's been ongoing. As we bring systems online, we try to get the performance to replicate our expectations. So far, we've had very good luck, very good correlation on those of where we expected it to be. There, like I say, there are a few systems left to go online. There's a handful of chemical systems that are not yet fully functional, and you're still using some temporary facilities to make that, to make those dosages, and all that is good and as it has been. As of now, we have, we're about 92% spent on the project, so we have spent just around $22 million of the city's money out of the $24 million that was budgeted, so that is-- So that has been paid to the contractor to date. But there's still about $2 million, as you can understand, left out there in projects, or in work to be done. We get the great pleasure of talking, one of the things I get to enjoy on this is Earl and I, we'll get to talk about this project in July. We're gonna have, it's one of the presentations that we will give at the Water Professionals Conference in Lexington, which is the Kentucky and Tennessee American Waterworks Association annual meeting. So it's one of, be one of the, probably one of the more attended, well-attended meetings, I would think. We did, two years ago, we did some on the initial design activities that had gone around this. But this will be more of a construction focus on how it was built, some of the things that were brought into play then, how it's performing, how it relates to the original design. So I think there'll be a pretty good attendance on that. And I know Earl and Andy will both be there for that one. And then, you know, really after that, we'll look forward to the public dedication that we'll all arrange, and we'll have, I'm sure, many notable celebrities and dignitaries attached to that. I don't know, I think Earl's working on some times on that as we speak, probably towards the middle of summer, by the time we get everybody's calendar squared. But we'll look forward to all that occurring. But, so, we feel very good about where we're at. We feel like, and I think that Earl can attest to that, and Andy Tompkins can as well. We've had pretty good, pretty good success with the contractor. The work quality, we feel like, is very good. We have a couple of areas we have to clean up, as with any project of this magnitude, we have a couple of areas that have to be finished, and have to be, some areas, a couple of things have to be redone. And we're working with the contractor Judy to get that done now. Are there, what questions can I ask, can I answer for you on this?
You answered my question about my neighbors on Cecil Street, so.
I am sorry.
I've been telling them in the mail, so you're right on top of it.
I am sorry, and I am sorry that, we, I honestly tell you, when we originally set the contract out, we thought that would be at most, you know, at most like a six-month closure. And it certainly has exceeded that. And that's just, when it comes back to every time, hey, can we open? And Earl asks it every, virtually every meeting, when can we open it? When can we open it? And it's just like, there's one decent reason after another not to open it back up as long as traffic isn't impeded just terribly. Yeah.
Everybody's kind of getting used to it.
What others?
Looks great out there.
Well, it's, we're, we're very pleased with it. And I think you all will be pleased with it when it's all done.
It's come a long way.
Mayor, while Brent's up there, you had mentioned the resolution ending in '05, be 19, but you may want to bring it up while he's up here, if you want.
And I don't have a copy of that. Did you take my copy, Donna?
I no longer have.
That's all right. I've got, I got a copy. Here, I got it, Donna. So item 19, which is Resolution 2017-05-08-05, is an announcement of our award of the $980,000 EDA grant, which comes from the United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration. As you all know, we've talked for several years now about the need, the major critical need for a large water line. What is that, Earl, 12-inch?
It's 12-inch from the end of Corporate Drive to Perrville Road, and a 16-inch line back towards town from there.
And what that does is provide greater capacity for our industrial folks, because they've had some needs out there. But it also allows us to continue a water extension service out to Perrville, correct?
Correct.
And this is, this is a very significant grant that's come our way. And I want to give a measure of credit to Jody Laster at the EDP for getting the conversation started. But I want to give the significant lion's share of the credit to city staff for going through all the logistics, the paperwork, the application, et cetera. And Earl, anybody else you'd like to?
Brent Tippy, we'd like to thank him, Bob Hunter, our consultant, subconsultant with HDR. We'll mention old Bob Sturdivant for a change, no, he liked that. So, and he's an avid shooter also, so maybe next time you get him down here.
Oh, is it good? We get a ringer in there.
Yeah. So this is, and this, you should know, this is a very competitive program. This is, this is a very, and we did not size this up originally. We figured it was about 50/50. We thought it was a jump ball, whether you could get this, despite the obvious need that you had, just because of the competitive nature of the program. So your staff worked very hard, Jody worked very hard with Bob and Bob on this. And it's a, it's a real win. You don't get a million-dollar grant dropping in very often. And in this case, especially in the water programs right now, they talk, a lot of people talk about infrastructure, but grant programs and infrastructure are scarce. And this is one of them that, in addition to the benefits you talked about, Mayor, there is also a fire flow component to it that is very important, obviously, for industry. And that's a, that's a big, that's a big assistance for those folks. So we're very excited about it. I think we just need to adopt the resolution. Is that, is that what Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. The commission, the resolution accepts the letter of conditions that you have in front of you, accepts basically the grant.
So with the commission's acceptance, I'd like to address item 19, the resolution, which I just mentioned, and would like to entertain a motion to accept that resolution.
I'll move to accept Resolution 2017-05-08-05.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry, Commissioner Atkins. Any comments, questions?
Is there a match on this?
We're matching it with project funds that are left over from RD. Of course, when we described the project originally, it was a water system expansion project. This was a, improvements that were identified, along with some others, that are not named yet for funding. But in the hydraulic modeling, as part of our original project scope, the water system evaluation that HDR worked on way back in 2010, 2011, I guess, technically. And so we're matching it with the funds, contingency funds from Rural Development, so we'd like to thank them also.
How much is that?
The total project will be $1,960,000, $980,000 EDA grant. The additional funding is Rural Development financing.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Brent.
Item 15 is Resolution 2017-05-08-01. This is the mowing contract bid award. Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have in front of you the Resolution 2017-05-08-01, accepting the low bid of Cutting Edge Lawn and Tree Service, who is the city's current mowing contractor. This mowing contract is expanded from the last version. We have re-added to the mowing contract the Welcome to Danville sign areas, taking that away from beautification. We have added the Clark's Run Trail, for example. We've added some other areas to, around the trail for more frequent mowing that was, than was identified previously. So rather than having it mowed monthly, we're mowing some of the areas bi-weekly or even weekly in some spots. Staff recommends acceptance of the low bid, $137,799.90. The unit prices for mowing did go up with this advertisement. The, oh, and one other thing, in order to accomplish the aligning of the contract with the seasons, we went ahead and extended the contract through the end of the next growing season. So rather than starting in July 1st, ending June 30th next summer, we're starting June, we are proposing to go ahead and start the contract, since it includes the other areas that they're mowing, June 1st of 2017, ending at the end of the growing season, 2018.
And Earl, there's one last component to the mowing contract, and that is that due to the fact that the current vendor is the low bidder for the next season contract, instead of paying the vendor for this month in limbo between the old contract and the new contract, and being billed for additional services since new sites were added, we're simply asking that the old contract be terminated early and begin the unit pricing effective immediately, essentially, going forward until the contract begins.
Do you hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to accept Resolution number 2017-05-08-01.
Thank you, Commissioner Sears, how about a second? Mr. Cardinal, any discussion?
Maybe, maybe thank you for doing that. Moving the contract to the off-mowing season makes more sense to me.
Yeah. One more thing, we did also, that's a change that does impact costs. We added a performance bond to this contract, since it started to creep up. So that's included in there.
Yeah. And I might also add to my Commissioner comments from before. These contractors are the ones out there that are working with Tom and taking care of Jackson Park, and I think they're doing a really good job. In fact, I've noticed a little extra mowing, and that might either have been your crew or theirs, around the trail in preparation for this run. So appreciate them working with us.
Anything else? Double motion, a second? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item, item 16, Resolution 2017-05-08-02, cemetery maintenance contract bid. Again, Mr. Coffey.
Thank you again. This, we handled in the same way we've advertised. We received one bid. The same vendor for the mowing contract is also the only response for the cemetery contract. We did administratively the same things with this as we did the other. It does include a performance bond. It includes the extension through the next growing season. And we are asking that you go ahead and start it early.
Do you hear a motion?
I move for approval of Resolution 2017-05-08-02.
Two. Thank you, Mr. Cardinal, how about a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. Any conversation, questions, comments?
How close is this to last year's costs? Do you know, any idea?
You know, normally that's written in the memo. Erica did that, I did not. And since I didn't look at it, I honestly just can't remember. I can look it up and report that to the city manager, if y'all want that number available.
I'm assuming, it's usually been pretty close.
I will say that, traditionally, that's been the reason why other vendors have shied away.
Right.
Is because they've been really, really low. I did notice that both of them have gone up this year for any number of reasons, I'm sure. But they did go up, but we don't necessarily see any alarm with the price increase.
And Earl, that was gonna be my question or my comment, too, is that this guy does a great job, but he also keeps the cost way below than what we did five or six years ago.
Yeah. And we're mowing a lot more, honestly. I mean, we've really, you know, increased the contracted mowing.
And the grass cutting, but picking up limbs and all that kind of stuff. Somebody's doing a real good job in both cemeteries, so that's really a plus.
Any further comments? Seeing none, seeing none, I call a question. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 17 is the spring paving list. It's Resolution 2017-05-08-03. Mr. Byerly.
Tom Byerly with the Public Works Department have Resolution 2017-05-08-03, which is our spring paving list. This is done with municipal aid money that we receive. This is the remaining portion that we had in our budget. The streets that we're gonna try to resurface this year are Cecil Street between Quell Street and Parkview Drive. And this is adjacent to the water plant. And Parkview Drive from Cecil Street to Lexington Avenue, that's next to the water plant. Daniel Drive from the bypass to Madison Avenue. Highland Court from Fourth Street to Center Estates Drive. Lisa Avenue from Houstonville Road to Jackson Avenue. Jackson Avenue from Lisa Avenue to East Jefferson Avenue. Silver Creek Drive from Shakertown Road to Candlewood Drive. Cloverdale Drive from Houstonville Road to Rebel Road. Pleasant View Drive, which is from Parkview Drive to McDowell Drive. Coldstream Drive from Streamland Drive to Brookside Drive. Angela Drive. Cheston Street from Pollard Lane to Hartland Drive. Hudson Avenue from Proctor Street to Cecil Street. Logan Avenue from Houstonville Road to Perkins Avenue. And Runaway Drive from Logan Avenue to Perkins Avenue. The total tonnage for this resurfacing on these 15 streets is projected to be 3,006 tons. The, we are using the state price contract, and Allen Company gave the city 5% below the state price contract, which makes it at 63, 60 per ton. That's the lowest price that I've been associated with since I've been here. And that brings our total price to $191,181. And those streets are all bituminous resurfaced with compacted bituminous between inch and a quarter to inch and a half. And.
No milling on this?
There was no milling on this street. We, we had some streets that need to be milled, and I'm gonna try to put those into the next cycle, because there's a charge of bringing the milling machine in here and getting set up for that. So I'm gonna try to do some next time that will require milling. But that's what I have on the street resurfacing.
Do you hear a motion?
I'll move to accept Resolution number 2017-05-08-03.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item 18, Resolution 2017-05-08-04.
This is a resolution for capital equipment purchases. The Public Works Department currently has, has budgeted these three equipment items in the current budget. And they were, are proposed to be purchased at the state price contract. They are Caterpillar 303E mini excavator. This is a track-type excavator that we will use in the cemeteries. The second item is a Caterpillar 304E, which is another track-type mini excavator that will be used by the stormwater department. And it is priced at $54,500. The first excavator, I don't know if I gave you that price, it was $40,000. The third item is a Case 580 Super N backhoe loader. This is a rubber tire backhoe loader, four-wheel drive, and it is $86,000. These items are all state price contract.
Just do a motion first.
Okay.
Do you hear a motion?
I move we approve Resolution 2017-05-08-04.
Thank you, Mr. Cardinals, are there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, now, ma'am.
Are we replacing equipment, or is this new equipment?
This is new equipment, yeah.
And, and other than what you mentioned as the difference between the excavators, why do we need those two?
We're using the excavators, both the excavators are being used by other departments quite a bit. We use them in water distribution and sewer rehab. The Case 580 Super N is being bought by the Public Works Department. But one of our other rubber tire backhoe loaders is gonna be moved to Perrville to be used, and it will remain and stay in Perrville. So we're helping out some of the other departments. But the trade-in values were very low, and I don't feel like that equipment needed to be traded in. I think we can use it a lot better.
Anything further?
And again, you'd stated this was in the budget.
Yes.
Is that, is that this, this year's budget?
Yes. The current year's budget, current fiscal year, yes.
If there are no more questions, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byerly. With that, I- With that, I believe we have exhausted our agenda. Is there anything else?
There's nothing further. Oh, really?
Really.
I will, I will make a motion that, that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, goodbye.